Councilmember Von Rudendorf.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canachino.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims. Councilmember Padaglia.
Here.
Mayor LaRosa.
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6 at SEC, notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the council of the whole meeting for March 26, 2018. First on the agenda is a presentation by our CFO, Jim Magan, in reference to the 2018 municipal budget. Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, everybody.
Evening.
Yeah, later on at the meeting, we'll be introducing the 2018 budget. And before I get started, if I could just start with an apology, this will be the fifth budget that this administration has done, the fifth budget that I've had a hand in. And each budget that we've done, we've always done the PowerPoint presentation with the budget introduction. And tonight, we won't be doing that. We'll be doing the PowerPoint presentation on the budget at the April 10 meeting. And I apologize for that. There's a few reasons for it. First and foremost, as you know, we've been working toward a $39 million bond sale, which is scheduled to take place on Wednesday, which has eaten up a lot of the time. Now, normally, we wouldn't introduce the budget until the PowerPoint presentation was ready, except for the fact that the state made a change two years ago where municipalities get penalized if you don't introduce your budget on time and you lose it on your best practices checklist. Therefore, the easiest way to do it would be to introduce the budget tonight, because the budget is completed, and do the presentation at the next meeting. Okay? The presentation will be at the April 10 meeting. The public hearing will still be held, you know, on April 24th. And then, assuming everything is okay, the adoption would follow. Okay? Now, having said that, we'll talk about the budget. You got a copy of the executive summary in your packets. And the budget itself, you see, total spending for 2018 is down $104,000. Total budget for 2018 is $105,65,733. And again, that's a reduction in total spending from last year of $104,875. And you saw in the summary that I had broken out the major components of the budget. For example, you see that salaries and wages are actually down $485,000 from last year. And what that's attributed to, for the most part, has been attrition. There have been retirements and a lot of positions that have been vacated that haven't been filled, because what happens is before a position is filled, we look to see if it's absolutely necessary, if it could be combined with another position, and so on. And so you see, salaries and wages are down 1.16 percent. Other expenses, which are the department's operating expenses, that is a total budget of about $6.7 million. But even that number is an increase of only $40,000 off last year. Okay? And what that's attributed to is that's our department heads really holding the line on spending. The big increases in the 2018 budget, or the single biggest increase in this budget, is in the insurance line, specifically health benefits. Total insurance is up $1,509,000 over last year. And if you recall, the 2017 budget was actually a reduction in total insurance from the year before. Now, Hackensack is a self-insured community for health benefits, and that's kind of dangerous. You know, we're going to have good years and we're going to have bad years. In terms of health benefits, yeah, 2017 wasn't a very good year. Okay? In the 2018 budget, you'll see the increase to prescription claims was up 25 percent. It's an increase of $554,000 from last year. Okay? Our medical claims, our projected medical claims are up $375,000. And our stop-loss premium is up $350,000. The stop-loss premium is, we're self-insured, and we're self-insured for the first, now, I'm forgetting, $100,000 or $60,000?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand. I drew a blank for a second. We're self-insured for the first $100,000 of every medical claim. Okay? If we have a medical claim that goes over $100,000, our stop-loss carrier picks it up. Now, that insurance itself costs us about $2250,000 a year. It's an increase in 2018 from 2017 of $350,000. Again, in 2017, we had a number of high-dollar amount claims, claims that exceeded the stop-loss, which drove that up. Now, if what we're doing is we're taking steps to control those costs wherever we can, particularly prescription claims, there's a number of steps that we've already put into place that are within our collective bargaining agreements. Okay? We've implemented an opioid procedure, okay, where there's an additional layer of authorization that's required. We've eliminated things that we can eliminate, that we don't have to negotiate, things like compounding. And we're requiring prior authorization where we can. Where we, the things that we can't control without negotiating, we're attempting to negotiate. Okay? We have settled already labor contracts with our police sergeants and with our public work supervisors, and included in those settlements were higher prescription co-pays. So all being done to try and put a limit on the increases in the health benefit cost, because again, that's the single biggest driver in this budget. In addition to total insurance, our pension and statutory costs are up just under $500,000. They're up $491,000 over last year. Okay? But again, total spending, you know, on this $105 million budget is still $104,000 less than it was last year. Okay? And what that equates to, in terms of an increase to the tax levy, it's an increase to the tax levy, okay, because of adjustments we had to make on the revenue side, of about $1.6 million, which is a 1.9 percent increase to the tax levy, still below the 2 percent cap, you know, though referendum is required or anything like that. But that increase to the levy, that's $1,685,000, what that translates to, to the average home here in Hackensack, the average home in Hackensack is now assessed at $245,431. And for that average homeowner on the municipal side, they would see a tax increase of $78.14. Okay? Now, as I said, the average home, the assessed value of the average home is up, because what we're seeing is an increase in total assessments, or put another way, an increase in property values, which is exactly the result that we were hoping for when we started on this plan back in 2014. One of the things that we were trying to do was to bring up total property values. Okay? What we said back then was that as total valuations come up, and it's important to realize it's total valuations, as total valuations come up, the tax levy then gets spread out over a larger surface. And what that does is that stabilizes the tax rate. Okay? That's how we can have a levy increase of $1.6 million, and the average home will only see an increase of $78.14. The way we're accomplishing the increase in the assessments is by the citywide reassessment that we did in 2015, and the rolling reassessments that we do in 2016, 17, 2018, and again in 2019. In fact, our total assessments citywide since 2014 are up a half a billion dollars. They're up a total of, they're up a total of $514 million since 2014. Okay? And if you recall, again, that's always been the plan, and we were just recently, just last week, we were recognized for that. Hackensack received an increase to our credit rating last week from standard and poor up to a double A, which is one step below standard and poor's triple A rating, which is the best rating that they have. And in the credit rating report, we were recognized for financial controls, for stability, for budgetary performance, as well as given a couple of pointers on what we need to do to increase even further, you know, in the future. So again, in your executive summary, you'll see the details of all the budgets, in fact, the last few budgets going back to about 2015. And the plan going forward will be on, again, on the October 10 meeting. We'll do the full PowerPoint presentation. At that PowerPoint presentation, I did want to spend a little bit more time than usual on assessments. There have been a number of questions regarding either individual assessments, which I can't answer, or total assessments, which I'd like to answer. Okay? And people, I want people to understand your tax bill. You know, where does your bill come from? We say it all the time, that the tax bill is a component of two factors, your tax levy and the assessed value of your home. Okay? And what I want to do is spend some time at the PowerPoint, explain it to people exactly how that happens. The PowerPoint presentation, again, will be at the April 10 meeting. And the public hearing will be at the April 24 meeting at 8:00 PM. And at that time, after the public hearing, the council would be free to either amend the budget or adopt it. And if you do choose to amend it, depending on the amendment, sometimes an amendment also requires a further public hearing, but we'll cross that bridge at the time. Okay? If anybody has any questions at all on any part of the budget, be happy to answer right now. Okay? Again, you do have the executive summary in front of you. Anybody? Okay? Nothing jumps out at me right now, but... Okay. And what I'll do is I'll repeat this overview at the regular council, maybe later on as well.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, as usual. Good job.
Okay. Number two on my list is a discussion of the storm drain ordinance. I'd just like to start off by saying that this is a ordinance requiring retrofitting certain existing storm drain inlets. This is recommended by the DEP. And basically, it's a, in need of retrofitting existing storm drain inlets and direct contact with repaving, repairing, reconstruction, resurfacing, or alterations of facilities of private property to prevent the discharge of solids or floatables, meaning plastic bottles, cans, food wrappers, and other litter, which obviously jams these storm drains, and then we get backups and conditions where we have to flush those out. So they're making, basically, those inlets for storm drains, they have a grid that's more like a, not wire mesh, but smaller entry level into the storm system.
Right.
So obviously, it'll keep rubbish and debris out of our storm drains, which will reduce the cost of what it costs to jet them or clean them, which comes to a city of this size with frequency and responsibility.
Yeah, I might just add that it doesn't, it requires it so that when there has to be repairs on an existing storm drain, that's the time that the repairs would have to take place. It's kind of like when you're dealing with ADA issues and you, you know, rehabilitate a building, that's when you have to come into compliance. So we're not going to be forcing homeowners to be replacing their storm drains, it's just if they get damaged when they repair them or they need to be replaced or updated, that's when the more effective drains would be put into effect. So I think that's important for the public to know.
Is there any grant money available for any of this going forward? Do we know?
Not at this time, sir.
No?
But I certainly will check.
Okay. Any questions on the storm drains? Nope.
Number three is the environmental commission. The city is obviously revisiting all of its committees and commissions. We're trying to add membership to them. One of the requirements for the planning board, I'm sorry, for the environmental commission is to have a member of the planning board to serve on the environmental commission. So they reached out to Gary Toziano to see if he would consider it, and he said yes, because the city code, the board shall consist of seven members and one which shall be a member of the planning board. So when, it doesn't have to be adopted tonight, but it'd be listed for the agenda on April 10.
Okay. We do need a few more people on that, though.
I was just going to mention that there are, it's a seven board member right now.
We have five?
Yeah, you have five. So if you have two more people that you'd like...
What about Pete?
...that you could do before the, we could do it all on the same resolution if you have it.
Okay. Number four is a discussion of special improvement district expansion on Main Street for the CIT. The Upper Main Alliance, which has been in existence, how many years, Albert?
Fourteen.
My historian tells me fourteen years Upper Main Alliance has been in existence, and there are basic improvements and maintenance of Main Street has certainly been a help. But as the city grows, we're interested in expanding that. So we have a request for the CIT to be extended further to the northwest corner of Sussex Street. The compelling reason for the expansion are many, but the primary motivation is inclusion of properties south of Atlantic Street, which the Hackensack historical area is located, simply represents a key geographical portion of the business district. So with this request from the chairman of the Main Street Business Alliance, Jerry Lombardo, they're looking to expand this, and hopefully be approved and supported by mayor and council.
Okay. We're going to need the specifics on that, Albert, exactly where they plan on going to.
How much are you going to cost?
Does it cost us anything?
Really?
No.
Then it's going to increase the taxes in that...
Yeah, but that's part of, that'll go into the budget of the Main Street Alliance.
Right.
And flow through them, you know, it doesn't cost the city anything.
That's correct, mayor. Ted, if you don't mind, can you just, it was the, you said the northwest corner of...
Albert, I guess basically, the Main Street Alliance, I guess, stops at Atlantic Street, and they want to keep going and cleaning it down further to such a street.
Yeah.
Right. We ask that the southern boundary for the CIT be extended further to a point northwest corner of Sussex Street.
North.
But don't you mind, Clay, making a collection with those stores have to agree to pay into this?
No, it's not voluntary. And when the initial special improvement district was created, there was, there was some resistance. I, you know, my suggestion had been to, you know, try to get some kind of consensus from the business owners and the property owners in the area to see if they would acquiesce to becoming part of this. But it's, it's under state statute, there's no requirement that they, that they have to agree to be, to be part of this. It's recognized by state law as...
But they do, and they do get, you know, quite a, quite a bit of benefits, including, you know, there's a fund there for new storefronts and all kinds of different things, besides the cleaning, the, you know, the garbage cleaning of the streets.
There is. And the Alliance, I know from having served as the executive director for about seven years, it, logistically, it makes things a lot easier if you're planning for, you know, any kind of activity or any kind of programming to come up from the courthouse. There's always been this disconnect between the courthouse area, the historic courthouse area, and the rest of Main Street, and this expansion would certainly bridge that gap. I just, I'm trying to figure out if this extends, basically to, this is the northwest corner of Sussex Street.
It's the Breslin-Breslin Building.
Breslin-Breslin Building is where it would stop.
Right.
So it would, it would include, but it would not include the larger Port Plaza just to the south of that.
No.
But it would include also everything...
Fifty Main.
Yeah. Fifty Main Street, exactly.
Yeah.
But I think it's, I think it's something whose time has come. I think the city should be supportive of it. I think that we just need to be careful when we go ahead and delineate the boundaries, that we're doing it in a way that makes sense and actually carries out the intent and purpose of the...
Well, I think we definitely need to have, somebody has to have a discussion with those store owners and business owners and property owners down there. So it's not so much the store owners, but the business, the property owners.
It makes the most sense, because when you do this, there's a lot of time and energy that our tax assessor and tax collector put into putting this together, and you can go months and then have a public hearing and then find out that you have a number of property owners who...
Right.
...aren't completely on board with it. So my recommendation would be to try to at least get them to see the benefit and wisdom in becoming a part of the...
Agreed.
...improvement district. So I'm assuming that's something that our city manager will convey to the Alliance. I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Albert, thank you for your background and insight. Anything else, mayor?
On that? No. I don't think so. Anybody else up here on that?
Okay. Number five, resolution preserving the CDBG funding. Bergen County municipalities, there's a sample municipal resolution to preserve funding for 2018 and 19. This has been in support of 1974 United States Congress through Community Development Block Grant, supports welfare of nations as well being, maintaining viable urban communities for social, economic, and political entities. Basically, this is to help fight, to save the Community Development Block Grant, to maintain a vital program for the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and Funding Level with no less formula and fiscal in 2017. So as our federal government starts to cut back, this basically runs downhill, so to speak, and we seem to get less. So this resolution is in support of the other 69 municipalities in Bergen County that are asking our federal officials to certainly give this some serious thought of funding, because it's an added shot in the arm for repaving or programs or functions, and it's been in place for decades. So we'd certainly like to maintain it and continue to prosper from it. Number six is a national prevention, weak proclamation for poison prevention. I don't know if there's much discussion that needs to be on the validity of why we should support that, so we'll probably move forward. And then we get to, probably the, the big issue is the DEP denial of the noise ordinance, which is the number seven discussion item. I'm going to defer to Mr. Climate here in a second, but we were all good, so to speak, until the state decided that they don't want us doing anything on Sunday except watching football. So, Mr. Climate, you're up.
Yeah. Well, you know, so I did speak to the DEP earlier in this week about what happened. As it turns out, there's actually a group of 13 experts that are like the New Jersey Noise Council. And what they do, they're experts appointed by the governor, and they review changes to the model noise ordinance on a case-by-case basis. So apparently, this group got together to discuss our ordinance, and specifically, the one change that we made to the model ordinance, which restricted the ability to perform any construction or demolition work on Sundays regardless of the noise level involved. Now, to be clear, that has been part of our ordinance for many, many years, even though our ordinance did not meet the, had not been approved by the DEP as the model ordinance, which is why we went forward. You are allowed to amend the ordinance so long as it is not weaker than the, than the model ordinance, but this council still has to meet and discuss it. And from what I was told by the, the individual at DEP is they all got together and discussed this, and they felt, and this is something that was raised at this council, that it would be an imposition, especially on homeowners, to be able to perform certain work on the weekends. So they discussed it and felt that it was a little bit beyond what they felt comfortable in approving. They felt that it would be better dealt with through the mechanism of a nuisance ordinance. Now, obviously, a nuisance ordinance is not as refined a tool to use, because the point of having this noise ordinance is to allow our health department and our trained experts on noise meters to go and measure particular decibel levels, and if it's above the decibel level that the ordinance provides, then you can cite the person for a violation. A nuisance ordinance is much more of a you-know-it-when-you-see-it kind of situation, which means that when you go to court, it's somewhat harder to enforce, because there is some level of subjectivity to it. But that was what they felt. I have prepared, if the council wishes to proceed forward tonight, an amendment to the ordinance that we have that would return it back to the version that the DEP would approve. The council could tonight adopt this ordinance. We would need to re-advertise, because we have to re-advertise when we amend an ordinance if it is a material change, and I think this is probably a material change. And then we would be in a position to vote on it next week. We would not need DEP approval again, because we would be tracking the model ordinance as our ordinance that we submitted last time. That was the only change from the model. And that's up to the council whether they wish to address that amendment tonight. It's literally taking one sentence out of the existing ordinance and replacing it with the model language. And then we can talk about if the council wants a nuisance ordinance to address this, we can take a look at that as well and have that for the next meeting if that is something you want to do.
Question. How does this affect Mr. Marcus Santi? Has some rotten deck boards that are dangerous to his, him and his family on his deck, and he wants to rip them up, and he's got a hammer on a Sunday. Is this going to affect him in any way?
Well, no. I mean, the draft ordinance that we had would have prohibited that pretty much altogether. The ordinance that we would be going forward with now would permit that. There are still decibel restrictions that apply during evening hours and the early morning. So the model ordinance says essentially that I want to say between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, the decibel restrictions do not apply. And then between 7:00 PM and 9:00 AM, during those periods of time, if the person was doing that work late at night, we could send out the health officer to go and cite that person. If during the daytime, the work was of such a disruptive level that neighbors were calling and complaining, we would have to send out presumably a police officer to write a citation under the nuisance ordinance, and it would go to court, and, you know, who knows what the judge would do with it? I guess it would depend on the kind of evidence and the kind of activity that was taking place. So this would actually make it easier for that person to do that work, because the ordinance that we proposed, you couldn't do any of that work on Sunday, pretty much regardless of the decibel level involved.
Why did we propose it that way, when we had already kind of said we wanted to allow people to work on their homes on Sunday if necessary?
That was not the conclusion of the council at the time. The conclusion of the council at the time was to introduce it with this more restrictive provision, as was recommended. The health officer recommended it, I believe, at the time. I believe, mayor, you had raised those concerns, but ultimately, the council decided to proceed forward with making it stricter on Sundays and sending it to the DEP. I know you were concerned about that particularly, but I don't believe the council went in that direction at the time.
Okay?
Now, with this ordinance, that allows to the person that only have to do the work himself, no contractor.
Right. Yeah, well, I mean, the ordinance itself, you know, I'm just going to pull the ordinance if you don't mind. You know, I mean, the ordinance itself really is broader than that, to be frank. You know, the ordinance is, you know, describes it as all construction and demolition activity, including emergency work, shall not be performed between the hours... including emergency work, shall not be performed between the hours of six PM and seven AM on weekdays, or between six AM and nine AM, you know, right now, our version says on Saturdays or federal holidays. The version that the state will approve is Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays, unless such activity. So this really does not necessarily limit it to homeowners. Again, we can prohibit it via the nuisance ordinance or some other mechanism involved. But with respect to the noise ordinance particularly, this particular provision is not restricted to mere homeowners. This is something that is permitted more broadly in the city.
Bottom line, excuse me, bottom line is, if we tried to change it in any way, shape, or form from their model, it's gonna get turned down.
We, we, we raised it to them. I had a long conversation with DEP about this. I felt that our change was within the realm of what would be permissible, but again, there are these thirteen people who get in a room and decide whether or not to accept any changes to the model ordinance. So we need to more closely look at what the council wants to do with respect to construction activity on Sundays and regulate it at, via some other mechanism other than this. I mean, we do wanna have.
We could just revisit our, our nuisance ordinance and.
Yeah.
Basically say, no commercial construction on Sundays. Homeowners are allowed to.
Yeah.
Do minor repairs or emergency repairs.
That would seem to be the most logical approach, and if that's what the council wants to do, you know, we'll have something, we'll have some further review of it and have a discussion at, what we can do at the next Cal meeting in two weeks.
All right. Any questions, any comments? None? Seeing none, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
With that, I need a motion to open to the public.
Officer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor of Councilino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Yeah, he is, he's inside here.
Oh.
He is.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward. You'll have your three minutes. Please give your name and address to the clerk. Dave, did you give an eye on that?
Aye.
Salvatore Meretti, 197 Alpine Drive, Paramus. I went over some of the published videos, which you have on the internet, and I found them to be rather interesting. We have, as you know, in Paramus, the expectation of the cancer hospital, Valley Hospital, moving from Ridgewood. I noticed in March of 2014, an issue arose relating to Mr. LaBrosse's activity with regard to the Hackensack Hospital. Of course, the issue here is that the mayor of Paramus might in fact become a employee of the, of the cancer hospital, and it would suggest a possible issue of conflict with respect to the nature of psychoanalytic jurisprudence. It was interesting to me, of course, based upon my study of cancer in regard to Hiroshima. And I had spent some time with the Hudson Institute relating to the issues of psychoanalytic induction, particularly under circumstances of brain implants, which were longitudinal. That being said, I could only suggest that due care be given with regard to financial obligations in respect of the fact that individuals under severe strain or tension or stress might have different types of responses to different types of stimuli. I know during World War II, there was a, an attempt to use psychoanalytic induction in an add subtract format when I was in intelligence services. I have two thirty-seven. I have about a half a minute, but I won't stress you. I'll sign off now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public, please?
Peter Marcusanti, Davis Avenue.
Sure.
Excuse me. I, since my name was used in vain, I still only get three minutes. I take it, you know. Maybe I'll ask a lot of questions, and then we can have some discussion. But I really only came here because I wanted to walk to talk and make sure that Mr. Mangan knew that I came here tonight to see the overhead presentation, but he is so capable and competent that we don't even need it, you know. I think everything was clearly, clearly explained, so I thank him for that. But I do look forward to living color in the near future. Thanks, Jim. I was just curious about a few things. Obviously, with the self-insurance being somewhat volatile, is this, just happened to be a year when a lot of people got sick, or we had some, some serious illnesses, or just a lot of drug costs? I mean, obviously, it was a little bit above the curve, I guess, is what you were trying to say.
Yeah, and to be honest.
If I may address Mr. Mangan, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, surely. Yeah, this, this was a year when there, there were a, a number of, of, I don't know how to say it. Well, let me, let me give you an example, and I'll use a, a personal situation. My wife was a, was a, was a colon cancer patient, and we had several cases like that, where the claims were in excess of, in my wife's case, it was between four and $500,000. We're on, the city's on the hook for the first hundred thousand. We had a couple of those.
I'm sorry, I mean, I didn't mean personally.
It's, it's hard to explain.
My wife also was a cancer survivor, so.
To me, I always try using an example, and that's the only example I can use.
The other example would be, you know, when all, everybody retires, and all of a sudden, you have accumulated, you know, sick days and accumulated vacation days to pay out, and obviously, that causes a blip as well. I didn't mean to get that personal. With drugs, I guess, do we have anything going with Walgreens or CVS when it comes to drug plans?
Yeah, well, our prescription plan is through CVS Caremark. And through CVS Caremark, which we just changed providers back in 2016, okay, because we negotiated, and we got a better deal from CVS than we did with, wow, I can't remember who it was before that. And what we also did, one of the changes that we did in 2016, is we also contracted with a group to audit our prescription claims. And those audits yielded us about ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars in rebates, which we hadn't gotten before, you know. And the premiums were very small, I forget exactly what it cost us. But the, the net on that was very good.
Right, great. I just, just a couple of things. I, I wanted to make a remark again on the, the list of, of streets that are being paved this year. I don't know whether Clinton Place has made the list. I noticed there were some potholes filled as I was driving here. Clinton Place is really a disaster area, one of the big, you know, east-west streets. And the same thing is true with, with Maple Avenue. That's still a, a horrible street.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm thinking, as we go with call-in numbers for potholes, you know, call the hotline, I'm saying to myself, you know, we have the patrol division, we have the traffic division, we, we have the street cleaners, we have the sanitation workers. They cover every square inch of the city every week, and all they gotta do is take notes and call it in. You got a problem here, you got a problem there, and that would really be.
That would definitely help.
The address. And then one, one last question I have is, I noticed there's a, a resolution, I just, I may not be here for the meeting, tax exempt property on Davis Avenue, Department of Veteran Affairs, you're gonna pass a resolution for a tax refund, a hundred percent tax refund. What is that? How, how was that arrived at?
I'll defer to city manager.
I mean, I heard of tax credits and things like that. This is a full refund at the direction of the Department of Veterans Affairs.
Do I take that? Yeah, what happens is there, there are certain veterans that qualify, not so much for a, there's a senior in, in veterans' tax deduction.
Sure, sure.
Okay, but there's certain disabled veterans are also qualified for a total tax exemption.
Okay.
And it's determined by the Department of Veterans Affairs, actually sends it to us, and we have no control over.
That's something they'll advertise? I mean, is it, I mean, obviously, I don't know a lot of veterans who know about.
Oh, no, the, I know the veterans' organizations do do a good job of advertising, getting it across the people.
Right.
Because what's odd is that when we see these, we see these from individuals years after they've been, they've become disabled.
I see. I wasn't sure whether it's disability or whatever.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
For your time, for the extra minute or so.
Yeah, well, he spoke through most of the parts, so it's.
Yeah, you know, which I'm not gonna do. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next, please.
Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. Yard waste. Sent you an email? Sent it to Mr. Englema a week ago, or it'll be a week ago tomorrow. I never got an answer. I, I looked on here, there's not a heck of a lot on here. Yard waste, as far as I know, was picked up on the same day as garbage, as far as I know. Mine didn't get picked up last Tuesday. And I did put this in the email, and I would've thought the city would've been a little proactive about it, sanitation would've been proactive. We had storms, we had branches down. That's what I have at the curb, is branches from trees. Like, the other town, there are other towns in Bergen County did a week of, put your branches out, we'll come get them. I mean, there are branches that, across the street, that just fell, and the neighbors left them there, and nobody's picking them up. I know, there, there are branches down all over the city. But I have, like, a big evergreen, it was six-foot branches, that the snow bent them, and we cut them down and put them out, and nobody, they're, they're still sitting in front of my house, a week later. They should be picked up tomorrow. Am I correct that it, when, when is yard waste picked up?
I was putting it out with my, with the, on trash day.
Yeah, and that's all I see, is a little blurb in here that says, yo, yard waste, let me see, recycling and yard waste will be collected on the same day as normal pickup.
Right.
Which means when it goes to two day, two times a week, it's still on your normal day, it's not picked up twice a week. But it doesn't say anything on here as to when yard waste is picked up, okay? I mean, there's a lot missing from this calendar, but that's like, kind of an important thing, that yard waste is picked up on the same day as your, your garbage. But it is, it didn't get picked up. And like I said, I don't know why we didn't do like, hey, I know you got a lot of branches down, put them out, we're coming this week and picking them up.
I will get you an answer. I have no idea why it didn't happen, but I will find out, and you'll hear from me.
Okay, but I didn't get a, an answer to my email either. I know the storm was the next day, the city hall was closed, but it, it's a week. I sent it last Tuesday night.
Okay, I'll get you an answer.
It's in my outbox, and I did check my spam. I don't see anything in my spam where anybody got back to me.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close the public?
Officer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor of Councilino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist, whereas the mayor and council wish to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from these discussions. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days or such time as the interest of the city, to not require confidentiality.
Yeah, I've, I've got a few cases I'll just update the council on. One is, is a case Torres, both Frank and Ken Zisa litigation, litigation filed by Jason Nundermacher. I will note, that involves the Hackensack University Medical Center, so we'll ask you to excuse yourself for that discussion, Mayor.
Okay. And agreement as well.
Yes, and then we'll add the, the agreement case as well.
All right. See everybody at eight.
We, we did also discuss in closed session the Reche case, so wanna put that out on the public agenda.
I need a motion to close the executive session.
Motion to close the executive session, please.
Officer.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor of Councilino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Now, I need a motion to close the council, the whole?
The Cal meeting.
The Cal meeting.
Officer.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor of Councilino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye.